To see me anyway.[1.01][1.01](Laughter).
We'll now call the meeting of Waco City Council, April 7th, 2020. Your order at 3:01 PM. Joining me online today are Mayor Pro Tem Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Hector Sabido, Councilmember John Kennard, Councilmember Dylan Meek, and Councilmember Jim Holmes. So all council members are present. Please join us for a moment of silence.
Thank you. On March 16, 2020, the governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective March 16, 2020, until further notice or until the state disaster declaration expires. In accordance with social distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, the Waco City Council meeting will not be open to the public. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.TV. The audio is also being recorded, and the recording will be available to the public. According to the Attorney General, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided, however, that governmental bodies offer alternative methods of communication with the public officials. This includes public comment on agenda items. And in an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to submit their comments to the city secretary by 10:00 AM on April 7, 2020. At this time, the city secretary, Esmeralda Hudson, will read into the record the comments submitted to the city secretary by 10:00 AM today. We will now recess the regular session and, I'm sorry, Esmeralda, if you'll go ahead and read those in.
Sure. First comment that we received for 2022-25 from Paris Rutherford was, "Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, over the last week, we have worked with city staff in the preparation of amendments and development agreement as listed in the background portion of the proposed resolution before you today. We would like to thank your staff for their efforts in bringing this forward and look forward to the opportunity to be in construction, beginning construction immediately at this important development that we believe will transform the city's downtown waterfront. Thank you for your consideration."
All right, we're clearing something up here real quick.
So Mayor, the city attorneys advised me that we can read these maybe during the business session portion of the agenda, at the beginning of that portion of the meeting?
Okay, all right. We will do that at the business session when those items come up then, right, and then the hearing visitors. All right, we will now recess the regular session and convene the work session with a report from city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good afternoon, everyone. There are no changes to the agenda today. I would like to thank our staff that have worked really hard to bring a full agenda to the council today in the midst of our COVID-19 response, and I can't say enough about the work that all the teams have done to bring this very full agenda to the council today. I also want to thank the council for their leadership in this, in our COVID-19 response, your support, and all the things that the council has done to give the staff good, clear leadership in this, in our COVID-19 response. So I wanted to pass that on to you, Mr. Mayor, and all the council members.
Thank you, thank you, Wiley.
Under employee recognition, I wanted to recognize Dr. Bill Falco. Dr. Falco, after a number of years, he retired in 2012. After a number of years of helping us part-time, he has stepped away from working for the city, and hopefully one of these days, maybe we can get him back with a special project. But I wanted to honor him because he has done so much for Waco over the years. He came to work for the city in 1972, and in 1993 became the director of planning, and then, as I mentioned earlier, retired in 2012. He's been on just about every committee that the city could have had, or been staff support for every committee and advisory committee the cities have having to do with planning, downtown development, Lake Brazos development, Mary Street project, zoning, tax abatement, just about everything that he could be, he's been there. He has also served on 12 different boards of local nonprofits and other organizations over the years. So he has, as I said, he has served as a consultant for us for the last almost eight years now, and we really appreciate all that he's brought to the city of Waco, and I just wanted to honor him today and thank him for his service.
Thank you, Wiley. I couldn't agree more. Bill has been a just invaluable asset and has continued to step in and help us on so many projects. It's a shame we can't all be here to thank him in person, but thank you, Bill.
Well, we'll have another chance to do that one of these days, I hope.
Good, good.
Also, under employee recognition, I would like to recognize Galen Price from Housing and Inspection Services, David Shaw from the legal department, and the entire code enforcement team for their great work over the last two or three weeks as we have dealt again with the COVID-19 response. They have taken, as of yesterday, 1,973 calls and responded to 163 requests related to COVID-19, and they've issued eight citations. But I think that Galen and his team and David bring a great customer service touch to the enforcement of the emergency order, and I can't say enough about how well they've handled it with the support of Assistant City Manager Deidre Emerson. So I wanted to pass that on also because they have, well, we all know, I think we've seen how great a job they've done.
Absolutely. It's been, the kinds of questions that they've had to answer have not always been easy, and they've just done a great job of working through that with the help of the legal team that Jennifer supervises. So thank you all for that work.
Now, I'd like to invite Larry Halsey to give the Halsey Report.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Tem. Turn your attention to the pictures. Look at here, a new fire chief. Greg Summers was officially sworn in on Monday, March 30, on the first floor of Waco City Hall by the city secretary. Chief Summers officially took over the reins of the Waco Fire Services that day, and Acting Chief Kevin McGee will stay on to oversee the EOC during the COVID event. The Cobb's Recycling Center reopened on Tuesday, March 31 for normal working hours of Tuesday through Saturday from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. No businesses are allowed to use this facility, but both business and residential customers can use the Citizens Collection Station at the city's landfill off of Highway 84. Social distancing at both facilities made the lines longer, but staff did a good job of helping citizens properly dispose of their recyclables. The Kevan Park Zoo staff, let's go to the next slide, the Kevan Park Zoo staff has been providing additional animal enrichment programs to help the animals adjust to not having zoo guests to see each day. They've been conducting virtual tours for people at home to see some behind-the-scenes training that's going on. The city took the lead in partnership with the Health District on getting the information out to citizens about the status of COVID-19 in the community. Initiatives move forward as very fast-paced, including launching covidwaco.com. That includes regional helpful information, including case count from McLennan County, updated daily, and easily translated to Spanish. The domain McLennanCountyCOVID.com is also actively forwarded to this website. Other things that you can access on the website, you can just subscribe to an e-newsletter that is sent out weekly with updated information from the area, donation information, as well as provided, all provided by the EOC, for PPE equipment and medical supplies. Local schools, area cities, and chamber information links are also included, and testing information and social media graphics that can be shared. We'll also mobilize social media to include case counts, facts, and preventive care, answering as many comments and inbox questions as possible, and working closely with code enforcement to communicate all business concerns that we, that need to be investigated. We also helped facilitate an electronic billboard and Facebook ads to run continuously, promoting stay home safe, stay home saves lives, which started and was pushed out last week. And the city's 2019 Annual Report Visions is now available. This year, we expanded the book to 32 pages because of the many things the city departments did last year. We also cut down on the number of hard copies printed due to the popularity of viewing it online. There's a mail-in coupon in this month's City Limits newsletter. We will have copies available at the library locations, community centers, as well as City Hall and the water office when they open back up. In the meantime, we invite citizens to visit our website at waco-texas.com and click on the, click under the latest news and information, and enjoy some really great photos and information about what the city departments have done during the past year. April 1, 2020 was since this date, and households across McLennan County are responding every day. We continue to encourage everyone to self-respond online, by phone or by mail, to help beat our 2010 self-response rate of 63.1%. Waco's current self-response rate is 41.3. And that completes my report.
That's a great report, Larry, and I just can't say enough how grateful we are for the great work that you're doing with public information and the great work that Esmeralda and her staff did getting this, getting ready for this meeting. But then just how hard our entire city management, legal team, city staff, everyone is working to keep the city running and keep things moving ahead in a very challenging environment. Our people have been working late hours every day, working into the weekends, and I just really appreciate everything that y'all are doing, Wiley. Thank you for the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under resolutions today, there are...
A minute, I've got, Mayor Pro Tem Bearfield has her hand raised.
I do. So I echo everything that the mayor said, and I did want to take a moment to recognize work that city secretary's office and especially our city secretary, Esmeralda Hudson, as well as her census staff have done. Though when we were, the Complete Count Committee was dedicated to getting our numbers up, and then we ran upon a pandemic, but I'm really proud to say McLennan County's response numbers are still doing well, and they have continued to regularly activate our social media feeds and the commercials and the PSAs and still doing the work because regardless of what's happening right now with this pandemic, you know, these numbers will affect us for the next few years. So I wanted to just stop for a moment to make sure that I recognize the work that they've done, that our community supporters have done to get the information out about census and that they're still doing, because we've still got to get this count. So I appreciate everything that the committee has done and our staff, so, yeah.
Thank you, Andrea. And along with that, I'll add, you know, I'm still extremely concerned about an undercount for the college students who have gone home for the, during this pandemic and are attending school online. Baylor sent out a blast to all its students yesterday that included a link to a PSA from the Census Bureau that instructed them to answer the census as though they were staying where they normally would be this time of year. So I'm glad that at least is the formal government response at this point, and we just need to continue to push that out and then try to get some work done to adjust the numbers after the census so that the numbers line up with the enrollment at our colleges. But I also want to take this opportunity to, again, ask the public to please complete the census online. Just go to 2020census.gov. It is very easy to complete. It takes less than 10 minutes. There's not a question about citizenship, and the government, the Census Bureau is required by the Constitution to keep that information private for a, for many years. There's no need to worry about that. It is really important. It adds up to $1,500 per person per year for each person who doesn't complete the census and isn't counted, which is $15,000 over the next 10 years, and you just multiply that out by everybody who fails to report, it will cost our community millions of dollars. So please complete the census. With that, I will turn it back to Wiley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before we, before we move on, I'm so sorry. If everyone can please mute their phones. I hear country music or something or a radio session, and while I'm a huge fan of radio, it just makes it a little bit harsh here, the mayor and Wiley. So if everyone can please just mute their phones. I'm not sure who it is, but please, thank you so much. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, thank you. Esmeralda, can you just mute them there on Zoom and then let us...
Yeah, they're all, they're all muted. I think it may be somebody's hold that's playing the music.
Okay, we'll try to figure out where that music is coming from and make it go away. I apologize for that. We knew there would be technology challenges, but we're doing a good job getting through this, so thank you. All right, Wiley.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are 19 resolutions today. The first resolutions I'd like to highlight are Resolutions 2020-225 and 2020-226, and I actually like to ask Deputy City Manager Bradley Ford to give the council a brief overview of these two resolutions.
Thanks, Wiley. On 225, this is, of course, the second amendment to the master development agreement with Catalyst Urban and the city of Waco for the Riverfront Development Project. What you're seeing here are the modifications to the first amendment of the MDA now shown as second amendment. It covers an extension of the Phase 1 commencement date from March 20 to April 9, which is Wednesday. It also deletes Phase 4 from the project. It limits the claim of force majeure event within 90 days of the Phase 1 commencement date, as well as it makes Phases 2 and 3 of the project dependent upon the Phase 1 commencement date. Those are the changes that we show on this second amendment, and I'll take any questions the council has.
Are there any questions or so?
I'll just say, Mrs. Holmes, really no questions, just comments. And I will quote Vince Gill, the country western singer, "One more last chance before we say it's through." And I think it's good that we did kind of do, look at this one more time. It gave us all, last week when we kind of took a step back from it, gave us the juncture to kind of look at the elements of the contract and what was working for either party and what kind of wasn't working. And I appreciate Bradley, you, and Mallette and the team there, as well as the Catalyst team on trying to figure this thing out and moving forward with it. And I think it's important that we get this thing back on track, and with the start date, if I'm not mistaken, it's the day after tomorrow, right, Bradley?
Yes, sir. It's Wednesday, the 9th.
Wednesday. It's tomorrow, okay.
Or, is it Thursday? Sorry. The days, sorry, council member, days are running together, sorry. Thursday, yes, sir.
You had me convinced there.
Sorry.
But anyway, no, I think, I appreciate the work the staff did on this and appreciate the work the Catalyst is doing to lead the middle and get this thing back on track.
Thanks. Councilmember Sabido.
Yes, I just want to echo council members, council members' comments. You know, I'm very glad to see this on the agenda again. I know that this is an area that we all want to see developed, and I think it'll be a great thing for Waco. I'm glad that we were able to come back to the table and renegotiate the contract and really move forward with this project. I am very grateful for our economic development staff, you know, under the leadership of Deputy Manager Ford, and so I'm excited about what to come. I'm excited that ground is going to be broken here in less than 48 hours, and so I also just want to thank the Catalyst group for their willingness to be flexible, and so I'm just very excited to see this, to see this project come to fruition. So thank you, everyone, for your hard work on this.
And Councilmember Meek.
My question is for staff. I just want to confirm that y'all feel good about proceeding and that you, in fact, recommend proceeding based on the discussions that have taken place since our last meeting.
I think we're going to have an executive session here to discuss that and just at the end of this work session.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Thank you. All right, Wiley, continue, or Bradley, whichever.
Moving on to the next resolution, 226. This is a property acquisition. In 2019, City Center Bridge LLC purchased a little under an acre of property located on Elm Avenue between Mann North and South, so effectively the lot between Elm and Bridge Street. The city does request authorization from the council to purchase this property for $200,000. This property will be the site of the Public Plaza, which was recently funded in the Bridge Festival Street project, you might recall. It'll really be a focal point for the revitalization of this historic business and residential district. This property actually will also be useful on the Elm Avenue Streetscape project, which will get underway in the coming months as well. And I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Bradley. I wanted to thank you for bringing this information to us today. We are, even in the midst of a pandemic, we still have a process in the city to run. And this is one of those things that I think will be important to the redevelopment of District 1 specifically, but the things that touch, all the things that make Waco Waco, you know, with the Plaza, you know, that will encourage the absolutely prosperous and moving arts community that we have, and will allow another venue for things to grow and develop once we get to the other side of this crisis. And I think that with the work that's happening on Elm Avenue, this will tie those ends together and allow us to continue the process that we were going on. So I'm absolutely supportive of this resolution.
Right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
And Mrs. Holmes here, I'll echo Andrea there, Councilmember Bearfield. These are so great, so somber times that we're in here, but projects like these two, the Riverfront Plaza and the Plaza project, they give us something to look forward to as we get, as we get to the end of the tunnel here and, as Andrea said, get to the other side. These are, I'm glad to try to keep business as usual here a little bit in the context of the crisis that we're going through, but again, these are both great projects and hope to be taken off.
All right.
Thank you, Bradley. The next resolution, 2020-228, is one of the Texas Anti-Gang Grant Items. We have two agenda items today. The first is 228. The second one is 2020-238, and I'd like to ask Assistant City Manager Ryan Holt to go over both of these items.
Thank you, Wiley. Resolution 2020-228 is the first resolution, and it is the result of an RFP issued on February 24 of this year. It's to consider a resolution awarding a contract for the construction portion of the Waco-Texas Anti-Gang Center to CWA Construction, which is a local firm, in an amount not to exceed $721,796. We were pleased with the, with the bids on that. It's a little bit of good news in the midst of everything else that's going on. I can take any questions on that one.
A question from Councilmember Sabido.
No, it's not a question, but I did want to say thank you also to Assistant City Manager Holt. You know, this is one that, that's very near and dear to me. I do appreciate all of the work that has gone into this tag center, and once again, to see it come to fruition. And not only that, but to see it come to fruition at a less expensive rate than what we originally thought, it makes it even better. And so, you know, just want to say, I want to reiterate again, you know, public safety is still a priority for council, and this is one of the things that I think is going to, that's going to help our public feel safe in our community and our city. And so I just want to thank everyone involved for all their work on this specific resolution.
Good, thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. The Resolution 2020-238 is to consider a resolution approving an interlocal cooperative agreement, which will establish a, an executive board for the anchor agencies to be co-located in the Waco-Texas Anti-Gang Center. The ones listed in this agreement are the city of Waco, McLennan County, and the Texas Department of Public Safety. Like I said, they'll be the anchor agencies, and there'll be a number of other agencies, but they'll serve on the board.
Councilmember Meek.
I just want to echo what Councilmember Sabido said previously. This is great news. Public safety continues to be a priority. I think that this should demonstrate to our public that in the midst of a crisis, our city staff is able to continue to maintain core functions of our city. This is, this is really great news from a public safety perspective and through collaboration and partnership with these entities. I think we're going to see better outcomes in our community, and I'm excited for that. I think that our citizens are going to greatly benefit from this, and so thank you to staff and thank you to the partnership that we'll be forming with these other institutes as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I did want to mention on the first item, 228, I think we had a great partnership with the police department and our facilities group to get that great bid in that we got. And Derek Altman in Facilities, I think, worked with Assistant Chief Lanning, is that correct?
Yes.
And Kelly Holochek to get a bid that was significantly under the available dollars. So I want to recognize their great work also.
Yeah, that's terrific. Thank you.
Resolutions 2020-230, did we have somebody? Resolutions 2020-230 through 234, these are Texas Department of Health Services grants to the Waco McLennan County Public Health District, and Assistant City Manager Deidre Emerson is here if you have any questions on those. I believe five items there.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Resolution 2020-237 approves the land use assumptions and capital improvements plan for the city's proposed water, wastewater, and roadway impact fees, and I'd like to ask Deputy City Manager Bradley Ford to provide some more detail on this very important agenda item.
Thanks, Wiley. As you said, the land use assumptions that are in your packet show the projected growth in population and employment in the city and ETJ. And as you go through that appendix, you'll start to see some significant growth projections indicating much of the growth is happening on the edge of our city. And I know that's not a surprise to the council, but it frankly reinforces the reason why the impact fee project is needed. In addition to the land use assumptions, it also includes the capital improvement program, which states which infrastructure projects will be needed to support the growth. We have scheduled Clint Peters to come back and give a fuller work session for the council on April 21 and get in deeper on this project. And during his overview, he'll be able to walk you through the schedule, which currently anticipates action by the city council on impact fees in August of 2020. I'll take any questions you have at this time.
Councilmember Kennard.
Yeah, Bradley, or just, I mean, on these assumptions, just given that how rapidly and hopefully short-term our economy has changed, is there, once these are adopted, how, I don't know, how easy is it to amend these assumptions if the economy doesn't continue to go, once we're past this crisis, the way that it was going previously?
Certainly, any impact fee, that's why we formed what's called the CPAC Committee. They review assumptions as well as impact fee amounts on a regular basis as required by state law. I will also mention, you know, the rate-setting portion of the impact fee discussion that's to come in the, in the coming months will be a time in which the council can weigh, do we want to fully assess the cost of growth as, at the maximum level allowed by state law, or do we want to do lesser amounts to start in the event the economy is in difficult waters as it currently is?
Of course, if you, if you do, if you do less, I mean, that, if the economy's in bad shape, it cuts both ways too, so those things will all need to be assessed. But also, Bradley, talk a little bit about the public input that will be required as we go forward with assessing impact fees.
Certainly, we, of course, our capital improvements advisory committee is made up by the Plan Commission, as well as several developers, members of the development community who've been in Waco a long time developing property. We do anticipate having further stakeholder meetings with those individuals in that group in June and July, as well as reaching out and visiting directly. I guess we'll have to do it virtually with the Builders Association and developer groups in Waco to ensure that they are armed with the best information about what our intent is and what our approach is, as well as the timeline for implementation.
Very good. Thank you, Bradley. I just appreciate y'all bringing this forward. I think this is something we've been wanting for a long time, and it's a good, good next step on that process. We certainly are not trying to limit growth, we're just trying to allocate the costs of that growth appropriately across our city.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we do intend, if the circumstances allow, to bring a more robust presentation on this back to a future meeting, potentially even the 21st of April.
Great, thank you.
Also, under resolutions, Resolution 2020-240 is a professional services agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for preliminary engineering design for traffic signal and pedestrian improvements along Waco Drive from the intersection of Center Point to Clifton Street, a pedestrian bridge at Waco Drive between Town Oaks and Villa Drive, and in an amount not to exceed $457,970. This is the front end of a grant that our Public Works Department, particularly Amy Brolary-Hayland, worked with Tech dot on. It is approximately a $9 million grant, is that right, Paul? And for, as you can see from the agenda items, significant improvements along Waco Drive. Really excited about this. I want to thank our Public Works Department and our great partnership with Tech dot to get this done, and this will be part of the responsibility the city has to, is to pay for the design cost, so we're working for it on that so we can get this project moving.
Yeah, that is, that is a very exciting project, and will make Waco Drive much more pedestrian and bike-friendly, so you're quite dear to that.
Resolution 2020, oh, I'm sorry.
While they have a quick comment, I'm still trying to figure out how to do the hand rating thing. But I think this sidewalk, there's three resolutions in here that have to do with sidewalks, 39, 239, 240, and 242. I think it's... I think it's good that we are thinking about multimodal and getting pedestrian. We have a pavement program that everybody is focused on. The food's also talking about, again, multimodal walking around neighborhoods, and I think it's important for the city to be thinking about that, too. And we can see we are moving on it. And that, if I understand, the one that we just talked about, number 240, it is a $10 million project that we got the grant, $10 million grant. We're putting up just a little over $1 million of city money for the design cost. So, it's pretty exciting for me to see all three of these things come to fruition here. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Holmes.
Resolution 2020-241, this is a change order with bars construction for Elm Avenue Infrastructure Improvements. This is the amount that was necessary to remove the railing that they hit over there. You probably saw the article in the newspaper about it, the structure that supported that rail, including the ties and the concrete structure under there, and then to repair the street under it so that we could proceed with that project. It's a $450,707 change order and allows that very important project to move forward.
Great.
Resolution 2020-242, this is a contract with MRB Group. They're doing the work along Elm Avenue for the survey construction and administrative support services for the J. H. Heinz Elementary Sidewalk Project. This is another grant that was applied for by Jim Reed and our Public Works Department, and we received the grant from TechDOT. It's a $186,000 contract to do the design with a significant amount of work to follow on the Safe Routes to School program over there for sidewalks, and we anticipate bidding that project in the summertime.
Okay. Mayor Protem Bearfield.
Yes. Thank you, Wiley. I wanted to reiterate your praise for the city, for Jim Reed and his team, but also wanted to highlight the community members who wrote the petitions and wrote the letters and helped kind of fortify our grant application because this was incredibly important to our community. It is incredibly to our community to have safe routes to schools. There are a lot of young people who are walking to J. H. Heinz, and trust me, I know a guy. And I am ever grateful for that this is going forward, that our team saw it through, that our community came together, and that we got this grant. So, kudos to everybody involved.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Resolution 2020-243 ratifies a change order to a contract with J. Michael Design and Construction for the Chapel Road Spring Valley Waterline Improvement Project. This is a project that has drug out for a little while, and it is building up the water infrastructure in an area that's in our ETJ that where we basically inherited the water, an old water system out there. The maps are not really good, and we ran into a lot of issues along the way, making additional connections and making service connections for houses that we weren't sure had service connections. There were some wells out there. And authorized them to complete the project, to get it up and in service. It is completed now. We still got a little cleanup to do out there, but it's a very significant waterline project to serve that area out there that is growing between Ritchie Road, Ola Rina Road, Chapel Road, and all the way over to Spring Valley. So, I would ask the council to approve that ratification.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Ordinances?
In fact, there are three ordinances today. All of them are second readings. Unless you have any additional questions, that concludes my report.
Okay. We have received comments on Resolution 2020-225, so it will be pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any other items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, the consent agenda will include Resolutions 2020-226 through 2020-243. I'll introduce this next work session item. It's 2020-222. This is a discussion of activities and updates from the COVID-19 community working teams. As you all know, I asked Mayor Protem Bearfield, Councilmembers Sabido, Holmes, and Canard to each co-chair a separate working team with a community member who was expert in the field. And I'm really excited to hear from each of the teams an update on the great work that they've been doing. I intentionally did not put Councilmember Meek on a team because I've needed him to help me with some special projects during this unusual time. And one of the things I've asked him to do is to kind of coordinate the work of the four working teams. And we'll talk about that a little bit more at the end of this presentation, but I'm going to turn it over now to Councilmember Meek to introduce the rest of this.
I just want to say, to start out, that the city cannot resolve all of the COVID concerns and issues alone, but Waco is a great community and armed with great and competent leaders, partners, and collaborators. And I think it's in that spirit that these working groups were formed. I think part of our city's DNA is grit and resiliency, and I believe that Waco will be stronger at the end of this, and I think these working groups are going to play a part in that. And we have a long way to go. Not everything is perfect yet, but we're working together. I personally couldn't be prouder to be a part of a team that we've assembled. I think we've got experts and masters really working in their area of expertise, and that includes my colleagues on the council, who are smart and competent and capable. Our city is blessed, and I'm thankful to be doing this work with each of you. These working groups were formed quickly as the reality of the COVID crisis began to set in, and it reveals a commitment to collaboration, a commitment to the different sectors that each of these groups represents. And frankly speaking, by pulling these community partners and experts together in their field, this is also a commitment to make sure that our core city services, for example, infrastructure and public safety, are not compromised in this season. So, as the mayor referenced, each council member is co-chairing a working group with a community member. Esmeralda, I believe we have the business presentation teed up to go first. Is that correct?
Yes. So, we would let Sarah Roberts and Councilmember Holmes.
That's great. I'll give a quick introduction on each of them. Sarah Roberts is the founder and president of KSR Advantage, an economic development consulting firm headquartered here in Waco, and she's currently serving as the president of the Waco Business League. Sarah has a compelling resume of economic development work and really understands the business ecosystem here in the community. Our own, Jim Holmes, who represents Waco Council Districts Five, is also co-chairing this committee. He's a business person, currently the senior VP at First National Bank of Central Texas and previously serving at First City, a global commercial real estate investment and services firm. Thank you both so much for volunteering to lead this effort, and we'll turn it over to y'all for your presentation now.
Okay. This is Holmes here. And first of all, I want to thank you both for that kind introduction, and thank you, Mayor Diva, for allowing me to serve on this working team. The name of my team again is Business and Individual Financial Recovery. But before I get started, I am homeschooling my kid here today. Homeschooling with an L in there. Homeschool. And he wanted, he saw me over here, he wanted to make sure everybody's safe, everybody's keeping their social distance, and looking everybody at speedy recovery. So, before I get started, I'd get my eight-year-old stuff, wishes out of the way. But the short presentation that Sarah and I will have here today covers the work and the goals of our team, the team members, what we're hearing from the industry in the context of business recovery, our outreach to date, again, we've been going for about less than two weeks, and then next steps. We, if you can go to the next slide, Esmeralda, or whoever's on the slideshow? Great. But again, we have a few slides here in this presentation today. The good thing about this group is that we're not reinventing the wheel in a lot of cases here. We've got a great infrastructure of business initiators here in the city of Waco. So, the outreach and the service that these guys already provide within their existing initiatives, the chambers that we have in, Centex African American Chamber, Centex Hispanic Chamber, Better Waco Chamber, Startup Waco, and the City of Waco, all kind of written together. They already have an infrastructure in place, which is really important. They never actually all worked together on an initiative, and as I told somebody, I liked everybody working together. I'm sorry that it's taking this cracker to get us all on the same page on things, but the collaborative effort and the collegial effort is just amazing. The business communications, again, we're working together both externally and internally to figure out best practices, creating feedback loops on everybody's ideas, and also just sharing ideas amongst and between the parties on our team, which is really refreshing. What's happened in the, as far as the small business lending strategy, what's happened in the time since we formed, you know, 10 days ago, we have the biggest SBA program in history, a $2 trillion program. So, our initiative in this first week, as Sarah will tell you more in a moment, our initiative has been making sure that everybody's aware of the program, and specifically the part of the program that's hitting most businesses is the payroll protection program, the paycheck protection program that is allowing some audience on payroll so employers can keep their teams together. So, getting that message, and it's been ever-changing from the SBA and the federal government, every day it changes a little bit, it finally went live this past weekend. And really, again, seeing all the chambers work together and Startup Waco and the City of Waco has been just as much fun as we've talked and shared ideas on getting this information out to the public. Also, I want to thank the local banking community because they're integral in getting these programs on the streets. There's other programs, and Sarah is going to talk about those a bit more in our program. And then just keeping everybody abreast of the state and federal relief programs that they come out, that's part of our goal here. Next slide. There we go. So, we put together, again, this is the initial kind of triage, particularly as we've gotten kind of snowed under with the SBA program. And again, the cooperation and the capacity that these guys have is incredible. And just going around the logos here, John Bible at Centex African American Chamber, Alfred Solano at Centex Hispanic Chamber, Matt Meadows and Chris Collins at Better Waco Chamber, John Passavant at Startup Waco, and Mallette Harrison at the City of Waco. You see five logos on the page, but the exponential reach that we're getting from each of these is tremendous. The membership to each one of these chambers, and again, as we share ideas internally and externally, we're obviously getting the word out on these programs, and they will get better as we have time to come last. Again, I'm going to hand off the more needed program over to Sarah, and again, Sarah did a great introduction, which is a head of the Advantage Consulting, head of the Business League, and we've got a lot of energy and commitment, and we've had a lot of calls with industry leaders over the last week, and she is tremendous and a great beneficiary of the city. And with that, Sarah, I'm going to hand off the rest of the presentation to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holmes. You can turn to the next slide.
So, you know, hearing from industry has really been an important part of the work of this team, and as we all know, one of the strengths of Waco's economy is how diverse it is and that no one sector really dominates. And that also means that there are a lot of different impacts across this marketplace. And this team has been fantastic at really diving in and focusing on different parts of the economy to make sure that there is a broad coverage of the business sectors in our marketplace. So, the Starbridge Partnership is the Centex Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Centex African American Chamber of Commerce. They've combined forces and really focused in on the service industries and food and beverage, about a survey very early on to really hear from the businesses as to what their pain points were and what kind of solutions they were seeking. Not surprising, vast majority of the respondents were small businesses, less than 10 employees, and the vast concerns were the significant drop in their customers as well as their financial concerns. The positive news was the window of opportunity wasn't that in the next 30 days it was going to be a crisis, but that they really needed revolutions and solutions stood up within the 60- to 90-day mark to be able to stay afloat. The partnership of Centex Hispanic and Centex African American Chambers have dug in and really tried to build programming around that driving customer base to these businesses, and also doing a tremendous amount of triage calls to make sure that as all of the marketing and information is coming out about the programs, that businesses are in fact applying for the relief programs. I'll give you a little bit more feedback as we wrap up about some of the needs that they're hearing locally. And then also, the second phase of surveying is really going to connect these businesses to a broader survey that's being done nationally and statewide to really track what businesses are needing and whether the relief programs that came through the CARES Act are actually working. The Greater Waco Chamber of Commerce has had standing industry calls across specific sectors. Each week, they're continuing to do that for as long as industry is participating and needing it. They've covered industries from the area industry managers, which are mainly large industrial and logistics firms, major employers in the marketplace, the Association of General Contractors, auto dealerships, the Architectural Builders Association, Hotel Association, Realtors Association, Restaurant Association, and they're continuing to do additional ones as needs arise. You probably all have seen that the Greater Waco Chamber, starting March 16th, really led out as a resource page for businesses through the Waco Supporting Waco site. That has been updated continually, and then additional outbound communications through newsletters and social media have been shared, really providing links to everything from the local orders to the state resources, legal policies around extended childcare and FMLA, as well as all of the relief programs coming through the SBA. And that's also been connected, we'll talk a little bit more about how that's been connected to the network of local chambers as well. Startup Waco took the initiative to really create a place for self-employed and gig workers to have resources. They reprogrammed their entire website to be a resource for people who are self-employed, to be a resource for people who are really the 1099 part of the marketplace. Frankly, a lot of the impacted businesses fall in that space. And they've also brought online a master's in public health to be a resource for employers, specifically small employers who probably don't have people in-house to help them operationalize the new recommendations about how to have safe public health practices to help consumers feel comfortable about still shopping with them, and to help them prevent future impacts from the COVID pandemic. The working team has also coordinated with the Creative Waco team, who has launched a virtual marketplace called MakeItInWaco.com. It's a great resource. I'm sure all of us have been at home at some point and wanted to buy something and went to Amazon and felt really guilty because we couldn't figure out how to find the local business that had that same product. And this is a way for local businesses and creatives and artists to be able to put their services and/or products online, gift cards, anything you can imagine. They even have some of our nonprofits in the cultural sector where they're pre-selling, you know, future seasons of themes and virtual events. So, it's a great initiative. This working team is trying to find businesses and make sure local businesses know about this tool and start programming their business on that platform. Esmeralda, we can go to the next slide. And then the outreach to date, really, the content of what messaging has gone out has been prioritized around the financial resources, partly because it is so critical to keep these businesses afloat so there's capacity for recovery, and secondarily because the deadlines were really fast approaching and the information was changing a lot. So, there's been a very coordinated outreach from all of the chambers and Startup Waco to reach as many of the businesses in Waco on the SBA program. Major push came for the April 3rd, which was the initial application date that they started receiving the Paycheck Protection Program, and then continuing to push through the April 10th application, which is for the self-employed workforce that can begin. There was a tremendous amount of communication distributing step-by-step training that SDC locally was producing. Literally, you can see on the bottom link, the SimpHalt camp with SDC was literally walking businesses page by page through the application to show them how to do this, making sure that they knew that if they don't have some of the documentation... that it's okay, get these applications in place now, and we'll walk you through creating that additional content. The, there was significant marketing around the Economic Injury Disaster Loan or the IDOL program, when last Monday, they added a $10,000 advance, which is basically a grant. Part of the importance of making sure that message got out is to the marketplace was in response to the Starbridge survey, which showed a major concern from the small business and businesses of color about the idea of taking on more debt and economic uncertainty. And so making sure that the forgiveness provisions and the grant provisions were very clearly marketed and understood was an important thing to reaching the small business community. There was also a video conference for all of the McLennan County Chamber Alliance, which is 10 area chambers of commerce, including Synthec Hispanic and African American Chamber, to do a Q and A on April 3rd to help businesses go through the SBA program. And then there's been significant amount of information and marketing to outreach on the Texas Workforce Solution Program, which both are for the employer through the Texas Shared Work Program, which will supplement if folks are being reduced to anywhere between 10 and 40% reduction. Then there's a partial unemployment that's drawn to really make up and make people's payroll whole, as well as the fact that a number of self-employed individuals who haven't historically benefited from unemployment can in fact receive that. So there's been a lot of marketing through the channels we've mentioned around this program. Esmeralda, if you'll flip to the last slide. So moving forward, our team is still obviously promoting SBA, you know, as of the numbers we've gotten to date, there's been 100,000 loans approved, $38 billion, but that's about 10% of the $395 billion that's out there. So there's still active marketing to make sure as many Waco businesses are taking advantage of these programs that all of us are federally supporting through our tax dollars. But we are also working as a group to make sure there's increased problem solving for the businesses trying to access Texas Shared Work. We've heard from a number of sectors that it's a program that actually would work for them, but if they're having trouble actually being able to apply, the system has had so much overload. And so we are working with Jose Palacio at Texas Workforce Commission to figure out how to help employers navigate that and get that tool to really be performing it the way it's intended to. We're driving businesses to the online marketplaces. We already mentioned MakeItInWaco. Another unique one is the Waco Restaurant Association has launched Waco Delivers, which is a way for local restaurants to be supported, but also you can, it's an opportunity for us to support the community at the same time. Businesses can set up to send meals to hospitals or different frontline workers who are really serving all of us as a community right now, and it's making it a way for people to do that easily with our local restaurants. Startup Waco is launching virtual programs. The first one started today with Expert Live Hour, where Ahmad Gori was the SBA's Public Information Officer from North Texas. Did a program specifically in coordination with Synthec African American Chamber. They're also marketing the MakeItInWaco initiative, doing an accountant program, and some coaching on public health in the workplace. They're also doing free, what they're calling expert hours for small businesses to be able to call in and get 15 minutes of invite from a local accountant, a local banker, a local lawyer, somebody that can really help them navigate this crisis with some additional professional support. Greater Waco Chamber is also taking their programs online. They have virtual power hours starting this week with Senator Jean Corin in the SBA, and also moving to helping educate businesses about how to be prepared for minimizing the likelihood of a COVID-19 impact in their local sites, and/or helping them figure out how to give their employees guidance about how to monitor themselves and whether they're safe to come into work or whether they need to self-quarantine at home. A lot of the moving forward of this working group is also making sure that businesses are really prepared to know how to operationalize different measures in their workforce so that the economy can keep moving forward. One of the things that came out just yesterday, wanted to share the update with, Greater Waco Chamber has also created a website, an update on their waco txjobs.com website that now has postings for all employers that are still hiring in the midst of the COVID crisis here locally. So job seekers have a single place they can go and look and know if you aren't quarantined at home and you are able to get out and be a part of the workforce, then here are the places that you can go look for work right now. Because just like there are parts of our economy that are still there making products and distributing products and serving other parts of the economy, they're still advancing. So the last two things really are focuses on local and state and federal policy. As we're working, moving forward, there are a number of pieces of feedback we're hearing from all of these different industry secretaries about smaller local initiatives that could be impactful to supplement the work of the federal aid that's out there. And so we will be bringing that feedback through Councilmember Holmes for you guys to consider in each of these specific industry sectors moving forward.
Hey, that is fantastic report. Do you have anything to add, Councilmember Holmes?
Yeah, I'll just say, again, Sarah, having her as co-chair of this deal, we're lucky to get somebody that's organized and is familiar with the community. I also want to say that, I think across the board, we're lucky to have this level of leadership in the chamber. I'm not sure we've ever had this efficient and great leadership that we have in John Bible and Alfred Solano and Matt Meadows, and how, and again, the new kid on the block, John Passavant, Startup Waco too. And again, I'm sure we're going to hear this across the board here, but having these guys work together and the ideas that they're coming up with and working spread the news as best we can in a very somber and gripping situation as Sarah and I reach out to industry leaders and just trying to figure out how to keep the lights on. So hopefully, we're going to get to the end of the tunnel. We'll get on the other side soon, and our effort here will be worthwhile. But thanks again, Mayor, for asking us to do our survey.
Yeah, and Mayor, one thing to wrap this up is the, one thing that we have heard quite a bit about is a lot of businesses knowing the important question of not just when we start coming out of recovery, but how we start coming out of recovery, and both as a city and as the local working team, working support businesses, knowing that it might look differently and being really prepared in the communications of that is going to be a critical thing for our business community.
That's great, Sarah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Sarah.
Hey, Dylan.
Do we have time for questions on this, Mayor, or?
I think we could take a few, we could take a few very specific questions, but if we take a lot of questions on each one, we won't get through the whole thing, all the reports, so.
Sure, that's right. Any questions from anybody?
You're going to have to actually raise your hand because we had to turn off the deal on the side to be able to see all the council members while the presentations were being made. Okay, thank you.
The only question I had was, are the links that Sarah referenced going out on our website and social media to make sure that, that if people might be looking for some other information?
Hey, Dylan. I think I know what you're asking. Yes, Mallette Harrison is coordinating with Dory to make sure that all those things are going on in COVID Waco. And we've also been coordinating with Councilmember Sabido's team about, you see a lot of virtual programs starting now. There will be more to come, and getting a centralized calendar so that local businesses that are looking for resources can find the events all in one place, just like we used to do for seeing each other face to face. So there are lots of ways that we're trying to get that information all consolidated to one location.
Awesome. Okay, thanks so much, guys. Jim, Sarah, we appreciate it so much. Any other questions from council members? Okay, we'll move on to the next one, which I believe, Esmeralda, is communication. Is that right? Do you have that in the queue?
Yes, yes, sir.
So communication is Natalie Kalinsky and our own Hector Sabido. Natalie Kalinsky joined the Waco Foundation in 2015 as the Director of Communications and Donor Services. She graduated from Baylor University with a Bachelor of Arts in Journalism and Public Relations, and bring more than 10 years of marketing experience to her position at the Waco Foundation. And the co-chair for this communication working group is our own colleague Hector Sabido, who represents Waco City Council District 2. He's currently the General Sales Manager of Prophecy Media Group, a cluster of radio stations in central Texas, and he's worked in communications and advertising for more than 15 years, and has an extensive knowledge of print, online, cable, radio, and direct mail communications and advertising, making him nicely suited to serve in this role. Thank you both for volunteering to lead this effort. I'll turn this over to you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I have to start off my presentation by saying now I know what staff feels like every time they come before council. And so now I have more respect for our city staff even more so now. But I will introduce Natalie, who, in here in a little bit, who has been just a pure joy to work with. I mean, she is by far the smartest and brightest person of the pair here. And so I so appreciate her fact, her work experience and just how flexible and how easy she's been to work with. And so I'll introduce her in a little bit, but I just want to go on to just talk about some few things because I know a long time limit, on goals that we have as our strategic communication working group. There are two main goals, and Esmeralda, we can go to the next slide. There are two goals that we have for our task force. Number one is simply distribute fact-based information in both English and Spanish to community members via identified channels, and we'll talk about those identified channels here in a little bit. And then number two is also develop method for communication between key partner entities. One of the things that we are focusing hard on as a task force is to make sure that every governmental entity and every entity that operate, or as many operating entities within the McLennan County are up to speed, not only on the health portion of COVID-19, but also the business relief recovery, and also the personal social services that I'm sure a presentation is going to be made on later on. And so these are just some of the things that as a committee we're focusing on. Next slide. Some of our key partnerships that you know is, of course, the City of Waco, which our Public Information Office has been very generous and very grateful to work with. City managers from other communities, so that would include city managers, and possibly even mayors from the City of Hewitt and Lorena and Woodway and Robertson, et cetera. Our Public Health District, Family Health Center, Emergency Operations, of course, our Business and Individual Financial Recovery Liaison. In fact, Councilmember Holmes made a presentation to our group yesterday. Of course, all of the higher ed, our three institutions of higher ed, MCC, Baylor, and TSTC have all joined in to work with us as well. All of, I would say, the larger ISDs in our community, Waco ISD, Midway ISD, and La Vega. And of course, once again, the chambers, all three key chambers, the Greater Waco Chamber, the Synthec African American Chamber, and the Synthec Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. In, not the next slide, but the slide after that, you'll see some of our partners that have partnered with us, and of course, we can't forget, we also have representation from the county level because all of us are in McLennan County. And so with that, I will turn it over to my wonderful co-chair, Natalie, who has, once again, I have enjoyed thoroughly working with her. She will go over some key messages and other things, but medium channels that we will get our message out. So Natalie, I'll hand it over to you.
Great. Thank you so much, Hector. I appreciate it. One of the things that we know that there's, oh, sorry, go to the next slide, please. One of the things we know is there is so much communication taking place right now, which is a wonderful thing. But we really felt like this group needed to pare down the things and the messages that we're trying to get across. So we identified five different areas that we are going to focus our messaging on, which you can see here, of course, ordinances, and right now, the big one is the shelter in place. But we know that those will change, and there may be new ones. And so we will use our group to make sure we are being very clear about what those are in a way that everyone can relate to. Relief efforts for individuals, businesses, and nonprofits, so very much in line with what the group you just heard from is doing, and we're getting a lot of our information and messaging from them. The health response and education and social services, which you'll of course hear from the two other working groups, again, working with them to make sure that we are communicating their messages out to the public. And then community stabilization, which just kind of encompasses the other things that we're all really thinking about and are concerned about. So those are the five areas that we're really maintaining our heavy focus. You'll go to the next slide, please. The components of our working group that we've just identified and outlined here. So Hector mentioned our key partners and reviewed who those are. And we have an email distribution list, so anything that our key partners feel is necessary to share or they want to share amongst that large group, we've made that available and continue to receive email communication from them. We have, right now, twice a week meetings, virtual meetings with all of the key partners. We have a separate list that is a distribution list. So anytime we get information from the key partners, we have even a more comprehensive list of people we feel like should get those messages. That includes media, some of our local bloggers, newsletters, things like that. Of course, message refinement and design, so taking in all of this information and our, how do we get that into a message that our community can embrace? So really refining those and designing them in a way that they're easily shareable and understandable. And then we are launching a community newsletter within the next 24 hours that is really designed to hit those four to five key messages that we talked about a few minutes ago. And then last, it's not on here because it's new, but Sarah talked a little bit about this, is a community calendar that we're working on that will have information about WebExes and other meetings that folks can attend to get information about what they need, whether it be individual, businesses, nonprofits, et cetera. So we're working to get that up and going. Next slide, please. The working group roles, so Hector and I really took some time to determine what we as co-chairs would be working on and then what the other partners in our group will be doing. So we identified our key partner liaisons early on. We're adding to those every day and sometimes updating them. But we have a pretty comprehensive list that Hector talked about earlier. We host the meetings twice a week right now amongst the key partners. We take those messages that we receive in those calls, so we have a dedicated spot on our agenda to talk about information needs that our key partners have identified. We take those messages, we develop them, and then we push them out through our distribution list. Next slide. Our key partners, really what we ask of them is to attend all of our meetings. I know that twice a week is a lot right now, especially with everything else everyone has going on. But we really feel like that is the most important time for us to learn about what the community is needing in terms of information, and then we work as a group to kind of develop, refine, and talk about distribution of those messages. Next slide. And then our public information distribution outlets, of course, they push the information that we send to them. So all of our key partners are included on that list, but again, it also includes media, bloggers, some other websites, and things like that. So we're really trying to reach a critical mass with the information with very short, succinct messaging that our key partners have helped us develop. And the last slide. The way that that works is, again, our key partners with Hector and I kind of helping to coordinate, develop the messages, and then we just push them out through identified outlets that are changing and being added to every day. So that kind of wraps up the work that's taking place right now.
That's a great report, and lots of great work being done there. Dylan, or do you have any, anything to add here, or Hector, do you have? Um, Dylan, or do you have any, anything to add here, or Hector, do you have anything to add before y'all wrap?
I, I, I just wanted to say, um, to end this, you know, I, I do appreciate my fellow council members that have been so generous in just, uh, being on these calls, um, at different times when we've asked for information, and so please, if there's anything that you feel that we need to include, or if you think that we're missing something, please feel free to, we're open for recommendations and suggestions. Uh, if you have dates that are important that you think need to be added to the community calendar, please feel free to send them my way. We just try, we want to make this as much, um, informative as possible, and so with that, I'll just, I'll just hand it over for questions.
If not, uh, with, with your permission, Mayor, we'll move on to the next one, uh, which is social services, I believe.
That's great. Thank you very much, Natalie. Thank you, Councilmember Sabido.
The next one, I believe, is health, uh, response and coordination. So we'll, we'll go to that. Um, the co-chairs of this are, um, Councilmember Kennard and Jackson Griggs. Um, brief introduction, uh, Dr. Jackson Griggs is the Chief Executive Officer of the Heart of Texas Community Health Center, what we know as the Family Health Center, which is a 15-site federally qualified health center serving 60, 60,000 patients in central Texas. Dr. Griggs is a family physician who has practiced medicine for 15 years, focusing on families living in poverty. Before executive leadership, he trained over 150 resident physicians while on faculty of the Waco Family Medicine Residency Program. He's an active researcher and has published over 20 manuscripts on topics of primary care, population health, and mental illness. Um, he is, uh, co-chairing that with our own, uh, Councilmember John Kennard, who represents Waco City Council District Three. Um, John's service on the council includes involvement on many, um, organizations benefiting diverse areas of our community, but most notably for purposes of today, um, he serves as the Chair of the Board of the Waco McLennan County Public Health District, and this is his fourth term on that board, so he's very articulate and up to speed, um, on, um, all things concerning, um, uh, public health. So, um, I will turn it over to you, John.
Thank you, Dylan. Sorry, my phone was on mute. Um, and I, uh, I will, my introduction will be brief because I want to turn it over to Jackson, who has served on the front lines of this and can provide, um, the, the information and update on where we are. As you said, um, I am, I currently chair our County Health District Board, uh, Jackson serves as Vice Chair of that Board, um, and so our task force sort of, kind of coming together on this is just an extension of the work that we've already been doing together, uh, to combat this crisis and to gather and garner the health resources available in our community. Um, I appreciate him. He's been a, a longtime friend, and I know that he, like I said, he is, uh, kind of leading the, leading the charge along with our other health system providers to combat this and make sure that as, as we all work to keep the curve as flat as possible and, uh, and garner as much resources and work together collaboratively as a community to, uh, work through this together, um, his, his expertise and his, uh, knowledge and, and the work that he's been doing is, has been vital and has, has been, I mean, leadership and out in front of that. So honestly, I'm going to let Jackson start talking, uh, because he's, he's, he's the man with the plan.
Greetings, councilmembers, Mayor, and, uh, and City of Waco, uh, who are in attendance virtually. Uh, I'm going to start with just some updates on numbers, uh, and then I'm going to describe, uh, clinical information flow, uh, a couple items on public education, um, and then, uh, I think Councilman Kennard will describe some media communications and, and data. Uh, so globally, there have been 1.4 million confirmed, uh, novel coronavirus cases with 81,000 deaths to date in the United States. Approximately numbers are about 387,000 confirmed cases with about 12,000 deaths. Uh, and in Texas, 8,262 cases and 154 deaths. Uh, in McLennan County, uh, 58 cases, five currently hospitalized, four in critical condition. Uh, we've had 20 that have recovered, and we have had, as you know, one death. So, uh, critical information flow is vital. This is, uh, the, uh, really complex time, uh, both in healthcare and in public health. Uh, and so I'm going to describe each of the nodes that are involved in critical communication. So envision, if you will, uh, nodes that are overlapping, uh, there's a lot of the same professionals are, are involved in multiple of these nodes and are communicating on a regular basis. So the first node is, uh, there's a, a daily, uh, huddle with executive healthcare leadership, uh, city leadership and, and county leadership. The, the second node of communication is the COVID-19 Leadership Response Team that's been meeting now for several weeks. Uh, the purpose of the Leadership Response Team is information updates, coordination, shared problem solving, and it's chaired by, uh, Dr. Brenda Gray, our Director of Public Health District. The members of the COVID-19 Leadership Response Team, medical leadership from both hospitals, Family Health Center, premier ER, uh, the Waco Mayor and City Manager's Office, uh, the Health District Board Chair, Councilman Kennard, and, and key staff, as well as McLennan County Judge's Office, uh, and, uh, Medical Society President, Dr. Bill McConiff is on that Leadership Response Team, and there are a few other key emergency, uh, personnel. That weekly meeting, um, has been vital. Uh, commonly, we're discussing in that setting, uh, coordination of medical and public health services, uh, personal protective equipment, uh, predictions about peaks, contingency plannings for need, and public health education. So that's the second node. The third node is the Emergency Operations Center. This was activated by the mayor's resolution that implemented the Emergency Management Plan. The Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, uh, has a purpose, uh, that, to be the central command and control facility responsible for, uh, emergency management. It has a strategic and logistical role, uh, and is led by Dr. Farley Werner. Dr. Werner, who's also our health authority, uh, is an infectious disease specialist, somebody who I have worked with for years on cases. I trust him implicitly. He's an outstanding physician, uh, and a great thinker. So we're fortunate to have Dr. Werner at the head of our, uh, EOC. Uh, the Incident Commander is, uh, so under Dr. Werner is Dr. Gray, um, and her Deputy Incident Commander is Stephanie Alvey. Uh, the EOC Director is Elizabeth Thomas. So they're all vital to leading the, uh, EOC. And the EOC is meeting daily, has met with, uh, hospital and FHC medical leadership as recently as, as this past Friday. The fourth node of, of communication is the Heart of Texas Regional Advisory Council, or the HOT Rack. Um, the Regional Advisory Council is functioning right now as the medical brimash for the EOC. Um, the HOT Rack is an administrative body that's created under state statutes, responsible for coordinating time-sensitive regional emergencies or disaster needs. So, uh, while, uh, in, in periods that are public health infectious disease, uh, emergencies, they are coordinating stroke and heart attack and traumas in the McLennan County and in surrounding counties. Uh, and the Executive Director is Christine Reeves. Um, the, the HOT Rack right now is responsible for envisioning, um, uh, if, if there, if there is a need, and right now, uh, there's not a, a high likelihood of this need, but if there is a need for a surge site or, uh, an alter, alternative environment for care outside the hospitals, if the surge exceeded the hospital capacity, uh, the HOT Rack would be the entity that would operate that. And then the fifth node of communication is the, um, Medical Society. Medical Society, McLennan County Medical Society represents 450 physicians who are united to serve McLennan County in matters of medical care, prevention and cure of disease, and improvement in public health. Uh, the Medical Society is communicating on a regular basis with physicians, uh, who are a part of Ascension Providence, Baylor Scott &amp; White, Hillcrest, as well as Family Health Center, and those physicians who are not part of those three systems. Uh, it's, uh, also communicating on a regular basis with EOC to coordinate personal protective equipment needs. Uh, the President of the Medical Society is Dr. Bill McConiff, and the Board, uh, uh, meets monthly, um, and, and recently has been in contact even more frequently than that. So those are the five nodes of communication. Again, there's lots of overlap, uh, and, uh, and, and those have been, uh, the Medical Society, and, uh, that's of course a longstanding entity. The, uh, the other, um, Leadership Response Team, the EOC, um, are more recently than implemented. So, um, so we're, when, uh, Councilman Kennard and I first met, we recognized that one of the key needs, uh, for flattening the curve is public education. The Health District has, uh, been doing work in public education, and, uh, we felt like part of the role of, uh, uh, the health response and coordination was to just support some of that education. So we, uh, had some preliminary conversations with the Strategic Communication, uh, Team, Councilman Sabido and Natalie Kolinsky. Um, and, uh, one of the things that we're doing, the Family Health Center is launching a, a regular video series called, uh, Corona 101, to offer some briefs on key coronavirus topics, uh, like, uh, what to do when you have symptoms, or, uh, how the virus is spread, how to stay healthy while sheltering in place. And those are going to come out Monday and Wednesday, and, uh, and they'll be in English and in Spanish, little videos that myself, Dr. Eliana Newman, who's a native Spanish speaker, will be, will be, um, offering. And then on Friday, we're going to have a Facebook Live, uh, question and answer session, uh, with myself and, uh, Dr. Newman, just to answer community questions. Uh, right now, those are hosted on the FHC, uh, Facebook page, but we'll, uh, be migrating links to a more central location. Um, and then, of course, there's lots and lots of, uh, educational work that's being done by others as well. I think, uh, Councilman Kennard is going to share some about media, other media communications, and then, um, and then data.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Dr. Griggs. Uh, I mean, I think the key takeaway from, uh, what Jackson shared is that people are talking fairly constantly, uh, working together, uh, to combat this crisis. Uh, some of the things that we have stood up to help get more information to the public is, uh, as Larry put in his report at the beginning of our session, the covidwaco.com, um, that is, that we hope to be a kind of a one-stop repository for the community to go. Our, our emergency orders are there, um, information about current case counts, uh, and, and resources for screening tools are there, um, as well as what to do if you feel sick. Um, we, we've tried to, we, we've tried to provide a, a singular area for everyone to kind of focus on and go to if, if they have any questions. It can be, that's accessible, that's not overwhelming with information, but that has, uh, answers all the pertinent questions and provides, um, uh, anything that somebody might need if they, should they feel sick, or should they, or they move towards this. And, and Dr. Griggs's, uh, education tools, uh, certainly fall under that, and we'll hopefully be able to have, if not a link, actually have those posted on that site as well, to allow for, uh, just one more way to, to communicate, um, you know, in a variety of ways, the, the specific issues regarding this. Um, one of the things that we have heard from, um, and I, I will invite, uh, staff to jump in on this, um, if, if they have more information at this point, um, regarding data and the need for more data, better data, uh, both from, uh, uh, system capacity testing, um, the things to help us understand, A, just kind of how our system is holding up through all of this, uh, to see what the prevalence is in the community at whole, um, and kind of where we are as a, uh, just as a city and a county when it comes to, to combating this systematically. Um, we have been working with our, with our local health providers and with, uh, the State Health Department to get that data and hopefully bring a more, we, we've started providing, the, the reports we provide daily from the Public Health District have more demographic information on them. Um, we hope to refine and broaden that, uh, in the near future, and, and there is other resources available that we hope to bring the mayor in the, in the near futures at as well, to help give, uh, our community at whole, um, a, a better understanding of where we are, uh, as, as a county in, in combating this, and, and how, how effective the efforts have been to flatten the curve, which the, the trend line seemed to be positive at this point, um, as well as, is where we are going, uh, in the next steps, um, in, in hoping to get, as we work together to kind of get through this. Do you have anything to add on that, Dr. Griggs?
Uh, no, I think that was a great synopsis, but be curious to know if councilmembers have questions.
Hi, uh, this is Hector. I do have a couple of questions, if that's okay, especially pertaining to data, but first of all, I want to say thank you so much, Councilmember Kennard and Dr. Griggs, uh, for your work on this, on this, uh, task force. I know it's very important, and, and you guys have been so just open-minded and, and open, uh, communication with all of us, and so I really do appreciate all of the work and effort that you're putting in. Uh, Dr. Griggs, I have seen the videos that you and Dr. Newman are putting out in both English and Spanish, and so let me tell you how much I enjoy those. I, I try to share those on, on social media as much as possible, just to make sure that the word is getting out, so I really do appreciate those videos that are being sent. Uh, questions about data, and, and I want to ask this, and, and please know I'm asking because, uh, I've been getting questions from either constituents or community members, but, you know, how can we have access to, or how can the community have access to, uh, more specific data? For example, one of the big questions that, as, you know, we get the numbers, uh, on how many positive cases are going on in our county, you know, uh, how many have recovered, but what about tests that are being administered in our county? How, it, how do we get that information out, or where can people access that information?
So, uh, great, great question, Councilman Sabido. So the, uh, the denominator is, uh, so the numerator being the number of positive cases, the denominator being the total cases, uh, so the governor's executive order was for, uh, hospitals to report testing data, if I, if I have that right. Um, it, so pertains to hospitals, uh, and I don't know where that repository of data is, if that's being, um, made public. I, I can say that the, uh, that the, uh, the, the number of total tests that I'm aware of, this is, this is kind of my, um, uh, I don't, I don't have exact numbers available to me, but, uh, I'm going to give approximation. Of tests that have been done in the ambulatory setting by, um, Ascension Providence, Baylor Scott &amp; White, Hillcrest, and the Family Health Center are approximately a thousand tests that have been administered so far. Um, so those are my rough numbers. About, you know, four and a half percent of those have been positive. Uh, so what, what that tells us is, um, you know, we, we are, we're testing a lot of patients right now, uh, we're continuing to see community spread. Uh, we have to keep in mind that somewhere between 40 and up to 80% of spread of this virus is asymptomatic, um, between individuals before they have symptoms, so it'll, it could be passed, uh, from someone who has acquired the virus, who may never develop symptoms, or has been acquired by someone who, uh, is in that dormant or latent stage before they demonstrate symptoms. So, uh, we, uh, the, the shelter in place, uh, executive order from the mayor and, uh, from the judge, uh, were just so timely and so very, very valuable. That is, it is critical that we continue to abide by those executive orders as a community in order to keep the numbers of, uh, of new cases, uh, from surging.
Wonderful. Thank you for that, because, uh, from my recollection, that's, that's the first time that I've heard, uh, a number, uh, on how many total tests have been administered in our county. So I do appreciate you sharing that with us. And then, and then the other only question I have is, is, um, I, I guess it's more of an observation and, and not so much of a question, but I guess ensuring that all of our community has, um, access to these tests, um, in an equitable fashion, making sure that everyone has, um, the same access to these tests, who no matter who's, uh, displaying symptoms or, you know, feeling ill, that, that, um, that tests, no matter who's displaying symptoms or, you know, feeling ill, that everyone in our county knows that they have the ability to contact their physician, contact Family Health Center, and just ask for guidance and direction. And so, other than that, I just thank you so much for all of the work, and really, on a personal note, to you and your staff, and all of our doctors and nurses that are on the front line, just combating this. And so really, from, our hat goes off to you, and thank you for all of the work that you're doing.
Absolutely, Councilman. And I'm grateful that we live in a community where council members and city leadership are so supportive of the healthcare systems and the work that's being done. And we will continue this conversation on an ongoing basis, and as data becomes more available, I think that there will be new opportunities to share that data, so we will continue to work in that vein.
Jackson, it's Dylan, or Dr. Griggs, it's Dylan. One, on that line of questioning too, another question that I've heard is, and there should be difficulty in tracking this, but the number of people who have requested testing, or that have exhibited strong symptoms, but have been told by their healthcare professionals that for whatever reason, their age, or not having a pre-existing condition, that they're unable to receive testing. And I don't know if that's a data source that is available, but I think, again, I think so much of this, to the extent it's possible, comes down to a transparency issue for people to really understand the scope of where we are as a community. So I would just echo, bring that up and echo what Hector said in terms of working to ensure that, to the extent we can get data, that's being communicated. And I have seen other communities communicating, producing a little more data, and I know that's probably not even for Dr. Griggs or Councilmember Kennard, that might be more for some of our staff or other community partners. But I do think that that is really critical, to try to produce that data. Any other questions?
I have one. Thank you again, Dr. Griggs, for all the work that you do, have done, and will continue to do. I was listening to the, in line with Councilwoman Sabido and Councilmember Meek, was listening to the Surgeon General this morning talk about the numbers of positive tests in people of color, and I wanted to know how we, if, you know, that we're monitoring that, if it has any correlation to the inability to be tested by people of color, more so than Anglos. And I also want to know if we are studying that, and we would be able to continue to track that? Because, not that I have seen in the state of Texas's numbers, but in some of our neighboring states like Louisiana and Georgia, and certainly up east, the numbers are staggering. In a city where you may have a twenty-three percent population of African-Americans, seventy percent of those that are tested positive are African-Americans. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was something that we were mindful of and documenting, because that's the kind of data that is the only way we're going to be able to turn the disparity in healthcare in communities of color, one way or the other. And the sad part is that it may take a pandemic to do it, but if we're actively looking at those numbers, you know, then we can't say anymore, yes, I know it exists, but I don't know what to do about it. And so that's one of the things that I need to, you know, wanted to make sure I said. And also, I do appreciate the increase in the breakdown of the data, because, trust me, I know you get the questions, because we get the questions, about do we have enough ventilators, do we have enough ICU beds, do we have enough these kinds of things? And those things that I, I know that we are protective of that information, but, you know, I'm quite sure that there's a way to be as transparent as possible, to make sure that, you know, just to offer a bit of relief to our constituents and to our people that, you know, that we have the ability to care for them. So that's my statement, not question.
Absolutely. And let me respond to a couple of items. One is, I do think that capacity data will be forthcoming in the near future. I think that there's a shared sense among other hospital executives that that's important to the community, and I see that being forthcoming. I've had conversations very recently with hospital presidents, and they have been, first, while I've seen the articles in paper, I can tell you firsthand that they are working tirelessly to do excellent work in their hospitals, and I have seen the work that they've done to prepare for this in their hospitals, building capacity, gaining access to needed resources, preparing for this surge. So a lot of what's been taking place at the hospitals has been, has been somewhat behind the scenes, but it's, there's been excellent leadership at both Essential Providence and Baylor Scott and White Hillcrest. With regard to that, all that information that I think the community is looking for, I do think that there will be more information that's forthcoming. So on the side of equitable access and equitable outcomes, I am so glad that you brought that up, Councilwoman Barfield, and I had a conversation with one of our board members over the weekend about this, had a conversation today with Liz Legala about this exact same topic. There are unacceptable realities in America that you know intimately about health disparities and outcomes that align along races. And I would, and we have got to work as hard as we can to minimize any disparities in this disease, in the outcomes of this disease. I think that one of the first steps that we need to take is around making sure that the right kind of education is occurring at all the, in the different areas where we have, where there's a sense of authority, whether that, I mean, I'm thinking right now about how imperative it is that our educational materials are in English and Spanish for those who are in our community that are Spanish-speaking. There are also channels of education and information that we need to understand and make sure that we're tapping into, so that we can ensure that all of our community is getting the important information about sheltering in place and social distancing, and not just assuming that if there's an article in this kind of media or that kind of media, that it's accessing everyone. So I think education will be imperative, and making sure that that education is also getting into the hands of those who have the social capital and the community authority to speak to different subgroups of our community.
Anything else? If not, I'll just wrap up, A, by saying that, you know, our health systems, and our health providers, and our first responders have moved heaven and earth these last few weeks to prepare and get ready and deal with this crisis, and that as the numbers that we've seen do continue to trend up, but have not been as bad as feared, that is due to people complying with the social distancing and with the shelter in place. And it is, if not for that, the numbers would be a lot worse, and our system would be even more strained than it already is. So I wanted to say that, that if, at the end of this, if it doesn't get as bad as we might, did fear it was, these measures and these steps, and the emergency orders, and our deliberateness that we are doing now really is vital to making sure that we are, you know, as the vernacular, flatten the curve, but making sure that our health systems don't get overwhelmed. So I appreciate, again, Dr. Griggs, and all of our other health providers, and our city staff, and the Public Health District, and City Manager's Office, that have been working tirelessly to handle this, as we all work together for it. Thank you. Thank you both so much. We appreciate all your work.
Dylan, before we, before they leave, before Dr. Griggs leaves, I want to share with you all that we are going to have a joint press conference here tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon at 1:30, with McClinney County Judge Scott Felton, myself, and I've asked Dr. Griggs, in his capacity as co-chair of the Health Response and Coordination Working Team, and also in his capacity as vice chair of the Waco-McClinney County Public Health District, to be here to answer health questions that may arise from the press. And, Dr. Griggs, I just, I really appreciate you being willing to do that. I think we need to have a consistent face for the public to hear from, and we've got a lot of great doctors, as you mentioned, Dr. Werner, outstanding physician, and Dr. Gray is excellent in her work. I appreciate you being willing in this capacity to step in and be the voice of health for this. I also want to say, John Kennard, thank you for saying that the reason that we are where we are is because of the order and because of the great work that people across our city and across our county are doing to comply with the order. It is making a difference, and if we were to lift it too soon, all of that would be for naught. So we're going to have to be very conscious about how we approach the idea of ending the order. It currently runs through April 21st. We'll be addressing it again next week on April 14th to discuss whether to extend it till April 30th, which would be the date that matches the governor's order. I think we will certainly want to do that, and I think realistically, it probably will not be able to end on April 30th. So I just want people to have realistic expectations about what we're looking at here. But that will give us time to see the data and know more by then, and I certainly hope we can end it by April 30th. I just, I fear that the peak that is predicted will not be, will not be over by then.
Thank you, Mayor. We will now move on to our last working group, which is co-chaired by our own Andrea Bearfield and Suzie Pinter-March. Andrea Bearfield represents Waco City Council District 1, and she is currently the Executive Director of the Texas Brazos Trail Region. Before that, she was the Main Street Manager for City Center Waco, where she developed, cultivated, and grew a sense of community in the core of Waco through historic preservation, economic development, and placement. Andrea is a native of Waco and the daughter of Waco Mayor May Jackson, who herself was a social worker by trade here in Waco. So all that to say, Andrea brings in her lifetime words of knowledge of the social service ecosystem in Waco. She sits on many, many boards, including Prosper Waco, which is our local collective impact initiative, making her the perfect leader of this task force. Her co-leader is Suzie Pinter-March, who is the Executive Director of Prosper Waco, as I mentioned, our local collective impact initiative. Suzie has held advocacy and leadership roles with the Southwest Educational Development Laboratory, the Christian Life Commission, the Cooperative Baptist Fellowship, and Pastors for Texas Children. Through these endeavors and her affiliation with many other associations and groups, she has worked on issues ranging from education to poverty to prison reform. Thank you both so much for volunteering to lead this effort. And with that, I will hand it over to our Mayor Pro Tim, Andrea Bearfield.
Thank you, Councilmember Meek. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and staff, and all those in the interwebs. We are really excited about the opportunity to really drill down into the work that was already happening, and bringing as much help or resource as possible to the hard-working organizations in this community that we've been charged to look through and serve. In social services and education, response to COVID-19, Mayor Dever asked us to provide a method to facilitate and communicate about issues and opportunities related to COVID-19 and its impact on each of the working areas. He asked us to help us engage our community partners and address those issues, and he asked us to provide better leadership and communication to those issues as we were working through the crisis and towards recovery. The ability for, you know, he asked, we say yes. And the fact that working alongside
Line muted. Line unmuted.
... has, you know, been in and out of Waco a long time, but very connected to our social services organizations and our community and our groups and our pastors, was incredibly important. And that she is the head of our collective impact organization, Prosper Waco, and the backbone organization for, that serves as support, was on a near-perfect alignment. So it has been my pleasure to be on the phone or on a Zoom with Suzie every day for the past two weeks, because we have had a lot to do. I'm going to even flip to the next slide, as we, going through, actually, the next two, going through the things that we wanted to do, was trying to figure out, you know, what our process was going to be. So I'll allow Suzie to come on and talk about what the process is, and identify who we were dealing with.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. One thing about our sector, social services and education, is that every single organization is operating as a business, a nonprofit business, and every single organization is also simultaneously responding to the needs of their clients. So there is a lot of stress in our, in our system, because we have the best in town in every way, in terms of leadership and commitment. But each of these organizations is struggling to readapt their processes to make things work, and so for the benefit of their clients. So one of the things that was very clear about our committee is that we didn't have the luxury of any kind of strategic planning, but, you know, we just jumped straight to strategic action. So in order to help out, there'd already been two community surveys from community organizations, so we had some input from our nonprofit community about where their needs were. Also, we did a second survey for the faith community to hear some of their concerns. And so as a result of that, we began to clarify this process, which was, okay, let's take an issue, somebody brings an issue to us, let's clarify the problem, let's convene the players for that problem, let's change, what process needs to be changed, or what new process needs to be added? Because nine times out of ten, it's just like school. Okay, we had school, right? Now we got a new way to do it with school. So what processes are changing in order to serve the clients? And then, what is problematic in that change? And how can we help our constituency move to at least step one of a solution within a week? So rinse and repeat, do that again, over and over again, for a list of issues that are being brought forward in our community. Go to the next slide. So here's some of the things that have come up immediately for us. Of course, with childcare for essential workers. How could we change our existing childcare? As you know, most of our childcare centers operate on school calendar, so when school is out, childcare is out. And that has created a lot of need in our community. Add to that the need for social distancing and special regulations, you know, so just gathering information about that. We heard that there was a need for formula, baby formula, just, you may not have heard of it as much as toilet paper, but the need is great out there, and so addressing, you know, immediately creating a strike force around that, finding out what was the, where was the issue. Childcare, checking in on those in Waco and surrounding communities. One of the most difficult problems that we face right now is medical need for the homeless and trying to work with our entire homeless coalition, all of our service providers, who, you know, I guess I'll say just clearly, our service providers in the homeless sector, they, their programming is not set up to be 24/7. They provide services to a population, they don't provide alternative 24-hour home. But now, under the Shelter in Place ordinances and the way in which their community needs to respond, there's a lot of demand on those services. So that's shelter capacity and the need for mobile So that's shelter capacity and the need for mobile charging stations. School meals, the onsite delivery, just gathering volunteers in 48 hours to staff up school meal delivery sites, that was a pretty impressive response in our community. And the increasing family meal insecurity that we're seeing now, especially on weekends and as there's more fragile conditioning businesses. The alternative education processes that are going on in different districts, just being aware of those. Our faith community, their functional challenges that have to do with, how do you do a wedding? How do you do a funeral? All those sorts of logistical things, right down to the spiritual and emotional needs of congregants and the response of mourning families in the face of death, which of course we experienced not just in a theoretical way, but we all felt it in our community with the loss of Principal Perry. Volunteer coordination, how do you volunteer when you can't go out, right? And so that's, it's another changing landscape, how do we adapt to that? And then, of course, dealing with our, all the problems that come from Spanish speakers not having clear information and, and a pipeline and a place to go, and whether that's immigrant issues or just language barrier issues. So these are some of the strike force issues that have presented themselves in the last seven or eight days.
Thank you so much, Susie. One of the things that, that we know is that the, the group that we are governing or shepherding, really, it'll, it'll continue to evolve. As the time goes by, the need of, of our vulnerable populations will grow, you know, as, as long as we are under, under the ordinance and or, under the ord, declaration that we serve, you know, these needs are going to continue to grow. So what we had to do, and what we were glad to do, was to go ahead and get, get those people in place so that we could, you know, potentially address some of our problems and get to, get to a solution or step one of the solution, as Susie identified. Go to the next slide. We have made some progress. It is not done by any means, because again, like I said, this will evolve, but when we, we broke down for the childcare for the essential workers, you know, immediately the YMCA stepped up and the Boys and Girls Club stepped up, and we were able to identify a place that the essential workers could take their children. Some of the downfall to that, though, is that we have heard that in order to hold your place in whatever daycare facility that you were going to, you have to pay still. So there are people who are being charged twice. So we're trying to work through the processes of, of, of how, you know, how that cannot be because, you know, again, our dollars are, are sensitive right now and, but, you know, if you're a essential worker, your children do have to be taken care of. Regarding the WIC, the two things happened. I mean, of course, our, our health district has the fantastic new WIC mobiles, and they got themselves parked in the health district parking lot, so they have done drive-through services that parents, that mothers can go and pick up the, the supplies that they need that they weren't able to find in the stores. But the other thing is that from a communal standpoint, social media activated and galvanized around each other, and they set up, Facebook groups were set up, and mothers said, hey, you know, I don't have this, but I have this. And so they started, you know, working and shipping and dropping off on porches things to one another. So that was one of, when, when not only the organizations and leadership stepped up, but the people just kind of wrapped their arms around each other and got that worked out. Elder care, we started talking with Hot Cog and the Council on Aging and making sure that the nursing homes were, that they didn't have any needs that they weren't being able to meet. I mean, with everything going on lockdown and all the people, essential people coming in and out, you know, they're trying to mitigate the, the ability for the community, community spread that we've seen in other communities, that the meals on wheels are still active and they, if, if your doctor's appointment is still the central rural transit, they're still making sure people get there. The Council on Aging also has people who are willing to go and shop for seniors if they can't. So there are definitely resources available for our elder community. The medical needs for the homeless, we've been working diligently with the housing, the homeless coalition. And, you know, alternative sites for those who tested, who test positive, which at this time that I know of, we have had no positive cases within our homeless community. But we are preparing in case there are positive or suspected positives for there to be an alternative medical site, and those sites are being reviewed today and, and to, to see what. So we are in progress of, of making sure that there are resources in place. Our shelter capacity, we, as Susie said, we've been talking with those organizations daily. We presented an, we're presented with a problem that a lot of our, our sheltered and unsheltered homeless community use our city facilities for, as a place to charge their phones so that they can continue to have access to resources. Well, there are still plugs outside of buildings, but, you know, we spoke with staff and it was one of those things, well, you know, we have had at one point promotional charging sta, solar charging stations, right? So what would happen if an organization ordered several of those? And we had several churches that immediately raised their hand and said, we will do it. So that's one of those things that we were able to, to offer a solution for, or step one to a solution. Regarding our education partners, you know, each, each individual school are, are monitoring their, their alternate, alternate education, alternate, alternative education methods. And so we are making sure that that information is, is succinct in, in our communication effort. Regarding the meals on-site and delivery, there are no more weekend meals with Waco ISD, but there has been a great community and church response where they are, a lot of organizations are working with the referred families of Waco ISD, so between their school nurses or their student coordinators, they are, are getting a list together of those, those families who may be in need and providing meals for them on the weekends. So we've gotten a good connectivity of how those families won't have to go without. And that's dealing with the family meal insecurity. For our, our faith leaders and our faith community function, we have had a great, great deal of partnership and work with Central Texas Interfaith Alliance, Liz Legawa coordinating. At one point, there was a call with more than 150 clergy on the call, with the mayor, Mayor Dever, and with County Judge Scott Felton to talk about some of the things and difficulties that were happening within the faith community, with Easter being this weekend, Palm Sunday being, and First Sunday being last weekend, what were the things that they could do? And out of that and those conversations, they've had several conversations and created kind of a, a, a task force within the faith leaders, and they've created what, what they have called the Waco Faith Leaders' Pledge. And it's, it, it says that in the face of this global pandemic, faith leaders have a responsibility to serve in ways that promote the well-being of our members and also that of the larger community. As we act in faith and wisdom to provide pastoral care, connection, and guidance during these unprecedented times, we pledge to keep at the center of our decision-making the lives and well-being of those in our community, from our youngest to our eldest. That is why I stand with local faith communities and following the guidelines of our local ordinances and pledge to stay at home, not hold public worship gatherings until the local ordinances are lifted. I am faithfully serving my members and community by staying at home and not holding public worship and gatherings. I am making my community safer for those working on the front lines in our hospitals and on our streets to keep us safe. The more faith leaders who take this pledge and stay at home and not hold public worship gatherings, the more lives we will save together. And that's, you know, with a hashtag, WacoCares, home is safe, care from home and safe at home. So the faith leaders have done a tremendous job in, in gathering together and making a pledge to keep their neighbors safe until the ordinances are lifted. We have been working to gather community or information and volunteer coordination. So Prosper Waco has mounted up workingwaco-together.org/covid to field some of those questions and gather the information sources. And thank you to all the things that the communication work team has done, because I know that they've worked in tandem to share and cross-promote that information. Folks like Act Locally Waco and as well as all of our media institutions and organizations working at, making sure our social media presence is there and getting the information out so people can answer our, our, the regular questions and the brimming questions on COVID-19. Finally, we've been working with our immigrant population to make sure that there was a manner in which resources could be made available to our non-Spanish-speaking residents. And so we have, are mounting a community-funded call center for Spanish-language users. And so that will be a, one hub that, that anyone who is a, a non-English speaker could go and receive information. And that was, that was propped up by one of our, our community foundations because we knew that, that that was, that was an audience, a particularly vulnerable audience who may not get the information and may feel unsafe to do so. So we wanted to make a way that, that they would be included in getting as much information and access to resources as possible. We've still got a lot of work to do, but this is, this is the progress that we've made. Susie, is there anything that I left out?
No, I think, I think you've, you've pretty much covered it. This is, it's a great community of responders, and just to remind you, we do have a community leaders call on every Wednesday. We have a community support organizations that are funders and donors, and we have a faith leaders call. And those are our basic tools of communication within our large sector, and we're in communication with our school districts as well.
Amazing work. The breadth and scope of what you're working on is very extensive, and much applause to you. This is definitely noble work, and I'm, I'm personally grateful. Any questions from the council, for Councilmember Bearfield or Susie?
I'd just like, this is Mayor Dever. I would just like to say thank you for all this great work. I'm especially grateful for the work that you all are doing on homeless. This is a critical need for our community, and, and we're approaching it in the right way, in a collaborative way with community partners. And the city will support that work, but we can't lead that work, and I really appreciate the leadership that, that you all are giving to this. And I also want to thank Liz Legawa for organizing that call with the clergy. It was actually one of the pastors that was on that call who suggested the pledge. I think it's a, was a brilliant idea, and I'm so grateful to the members of the, of the faith leadership that are, that are taking that pledge to try to encourage, well, for them to stay home, for their churches not to gather, and then also for them to encourage their, their members to comply with the orders and keep everyone safe.
Excellent. Any, any other questions? Thank you, Councilmember Bearfield and Susie so much. I just want to say again how thankful I am for each chair and participant of these groups. Waco is moving quickly and strategically. I don't think any of us are pretending that we're perfect, but it is such a joy to see so many in our community step up and care for the concerns of our city. And they are working diligently to approach these matters collaboratively and excellently. I'd, I'd just keep it up, let us know how we can help each of you as you're working. And the last thing I'll say before I turn it back over to the mayor is I want to just give a quick thank you to our mayor and city staff who have put in untold long hours, working hard, away from their families to make sure that this city continues to function smoothly. So thank you, Mayor, thank you, staff, and thank you to each participant of these working groups. I will turn it back over to the mayor. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you very much, Dylan. I want to thank all the council members and their working team co-chairs, all their key partners and the staff liaisons, which we had not mentioned up till now. And those are, for the Business and Individual Financial Recovery, Milet Harrison, for Strategic Communication, Larry Holsy, for Health Response and Coordination, Dr. Brenda Gray, and for Social Services and Education, Galen Price. The, the collaboration is, is amazing, and leveraging this collaboration with our key partners will help our city get through this and we'll come out stronger on the other side. Going forward, I'd like to ask the staff liaisons to work with co-chairs, with the council member and co-chair, to send a brief, one-page report on any new developments after, after y'all meet to Councilmember Meek and the city manager's office. And then I'd like to ask Councilmember Meek to work with staff to compile a weekly report on the work of each of the working teams that would be distributed to me, the other council members and staff. I just want to be sure we're, I've been getting emails from some of you, and I really appreciate those. I think we need to consolidate that and be sure all the, all the council members and, and city management and staff are, are seeing this, because there are things that, there have been instances of things that staff has been working on that they didn't realize working teams were working on, and we just need to smooth out the communication a little bit. I think Dylan can really help with that. And I, Dylan, I appreciate you facilitating this, this work as well. Finally, I want to thank our deputy city manager, Bradley Ford, for helping to put this together. I think this is, you can see how important this work is, and this was his idea and wouldn't have begun had he not suggested, suggested this to me. So thank you, Bradley. I'll now turn it over to Wiley, and we'll take the next work session out.
I think we're, we're, we need some time in executive session, so we will just put that work session off to the next meeting.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, thank you all. I know there was no way to really condense that into 10, 10 to 15-minute reports. There's too much great information there. So thank you all for those, those great, great reports. Are there any requests for future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:07 PM.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. Real property Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072 and 2. Economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session at 5:07. And council, we will end this meeting and open a new meeting in the executive session room.